I'll need your quick stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody have a chance to review the minutes?
Moved to approve?
It's been properly moved and seconded, that we approve the minutes for September 3rd, public hearing, regular meeting, and September 24th, special meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we'll open the floor for public comment, and we'll start with Shelley Gray.
I'm just here representing our 400 block North Plum Street and to figure out and find out what the status is of the property at 450 North Plum.
What do you need my status?
Well, it's...
I know where...
Right. And I've heard rumblings, it's on a list, it's... So, we're just here as concerned citizens because if there's critters living there, they're now venturing a couple houses down to ours, and I'm talking huge raccoons. Um, I feel it's a safety, health hazard. I'm...I mean, we have kids that live there. Dale's live right beside it with very small children, I have great kids. We're just kind of wanting to know, is there anything going on with that property? That...or is there anything that we can do to be...to activate something to happen to that property?
The owner has been sent three notices, one by myself and two by our building inspector Terry, who just did recently, turning next two weeks. And there is a demolition grant available right now from the county, and that is one of the properties that we have as an option for going into that. Um, we're not getting any response back from the property owner in any way at all. I do know that the property does need secure, but I think probably the next steps for us would be to put plywood over the door and the windows. Um, and you know, I...I know Terry's been in the house, I've not been in the house. I've seen pictures of inside the house, it's pretty bad.
It is, and the smell, the stench is...I mean, when you're in the yard, you can smell it. So, we're just concerned and feel like something needs to happen. And we had heard that it was on this list, but we didn't know what the process was about, when we would know if that was gonna happen.
So, I'll add to that. So, the list for the demolition is a federal grant, so that'll start defining how quick something will get done. So, it's got a really large process that you have to go through. I would think, I really think, well, I've been to a meeting over in Richmond about it. I really think Chris is probably head of most communities trying to get everything done. But it's such an extensive list that they actually had to extend the time period to get everything in because all the towns were struggling getting all this requirement in to receive the grant. So, um, Chris, if I remember right, they was hoping by the end of the year, they would be able to let us know, we actually have four properties on that list. They would let us know if one or if all or what would be approved on that...that grant. And then...
Is that property on the list?
David's number four is an alternate, and what's happened since then is that number one or number two on the list has gone up for sale. And then I've heard that one of the other properties is being purchased by someone as well. So, that makes it where we did have originally three properties on the list that would make it one of the...one of the candidates now. One thing that's interesting about that property though is that it was purchased just a year ago for 70,000 bucks by the owner, so...
Local?
Uh, out of Richmond, yeah. Had several rentals, so...
Who owns it? I mean, it's the...
Kyle Tom.
It's Kyle Tom, yeah.
And they...they haven't taken care of it since day one. Actually, the front door was left open for months, as well as windows, and it's just... Animals are in there, and I'm not sure what kind of animals, other than we've seen cats and raccoons. So, if this doesn't make the cut, then do we have another step we can go to? Or what is that step?
So, we don't own the property?
Correct.
The town is not...so you have to be...
Kyle Tom.
Right. We...you have to be very, very careful in what you do with other people's property. Even though it's not in the best of shape, and our attorney can probably back me up on this, we just can't go there and secure it, if you will. Now, there are things we can put in place, as Chris is talking about. He has sent letters to tell him, get it going. Our building commissioner, as he had mentioned, just put in his two weeks' notice, so we're gonna be without a building commissioner after next week. So, I know that is something he was working on towards the end of his tenure here. We can put...we can levy fines against it, but it'll just sit on the property until it sells. I mean, am I down the right path here?
Generally, you're down the right path. So, this is one of, obviously, you know, mentioned this list, and I've been initiating notices to them. We sent an official notice, got no response. So, the next step in what we call the unsafe building hearing authority process will be for the council to authorize me to do title searches on these four properties, because we need to know the owner and anyone with a substantial interest of record. So, that would include mortgage, judgment, anything that's attached to that property, because all those people are entitled to notice. Once I have that, we could send out an official notice and set a hearing. So, the hearing would be before the unsafe building hearing authority, which under the current status of our ordinances is the council. And then they will confirm if we've notified everybody correctly, if all of those things have happened, then that will open some doors that we could take action to even demolish the property and make sure that a lien attached to that property, so the town could get reimbursed, or eventually take title to it if the town wanted to. But there are some very specific steps that have to happen. Unfortunately, those things take time, and I understand, I'm not by it, but I mean, I sympathize. But you know, this is something that the council had asked me to get started on. Been working a little bit with Terry on it, unfortunately, it just, we can't move at lightning speed when we're potentially taking away someone's property, so...
So, does the town have ordinances that could be applied to these properties? I mean, are there ordinances attached where we can put fines on them and just go ahead and start doing that?
There are, there are ordinances in place, yes. I mean, we have ordinances, we just haven't, I don't think you guys have ever initiated the unsafe building hearing authority, and I don't think you've ever been down this path. You have the structure in place to do that, yes.
So, who has the authority to write the ordinance? Is it Chris, is it the police chief, is it the building commissioner? Who writes the violation? Who writes the violation of the ordinance?
So, the building commissioner is, analogy I use is, you know, like speeding ticket. So, the building commissioner is the police officer that writes the speeding ticket. Then the speeding ticket comes into court, and then you guys hear the evidence, you know, here's what the officer testified, here's what the person testifies, if there is any testimony, and whether or not that's a valid ticket. And once you know that it's valid, again, that would allow the liens to attach and all of those kinds of things.
So, these properties that we're talking about, and I left the meeting last time and went down to the south side of town to look at the ones that was being discussed there. There's no question that there's violations there. I am absolutely not in favor of sending out notices unless the ordinance requires us to.
Well, the ordinance of law requires we have to send out notices. We have to...
Can...
We have to give the owner an opportunity to cure. I mean, obviously, they're not, but...
So, when is the fine ticket, and how far back? Is it the date of the notice that was sent, or is it the date that the violation is written?
Well, it'd be, I mean, the day...
So, if we sent a notice out on the first of October, is...is there a violation of the ordinance attached with that notice on that date?
Well, yes, because the notice is the notice of the violation of the ordinance.
Okay, that's what I'm gonna get at.
To say, because we have to cite specifically the ordinances, and we did that. And that was part of the reason, part of Terry's frustration for the last meeting was, I wanted to make sure we had all that buttoned up, because we need to cite the specific ordinance that says, here's the violation we have, here's what we found, and you can either cure it or we're gonna take this further. And so, that's what we did.
If there's a timeframe attached to cleaning it up, that begins on the date that that violation or notice was sent.
Right. So, the way the notice reads, I think it's 15 days to submit a plan. Attached is a list of violations for your review. Notice requires that within 15 days of receiving the letter, you either execute an agreement to correct the violation. I mean, that's your end goal, obviously. So, if folks come in and say, well, here's my plan, then we're good with it. I mean, they can work with Terry or the building commissioner at that time and figure out, okay, this is the plan, this is the agreement. Or they can file a formal appeal regarding the violation. No one's done that based on these things, so... But to take it further and to be able to attach a lien to these properties, we have to initiate this unsafe building hearing authority process. We have to send out notice to everybody, because if I'm a mortgage holder, if I'm the bank, and the town comes in and tears down the house, it's my collateral, and I don't know anything about it, then I'm gonna have to... So, that's kind of the process.
But is the notice of the violation, the notice that's sent out, is the date? That's a fifth, that starts the timeframe?
Right, because that's when it's been identified and documented, and we're sending out the notice, and it's just...
So, the timeframe's set on the property owner, or there are timeframes set upon the council to have the hearing and to move forward? Are we, are we under a time, I would hope?
Um, I mean, I'll have to review all the ordinances to be able to quote a specific date, but obviously, you wanna move at a reasonable speed to take this forward, which I think, we get a title search, and we have a hearing within 30, 45 days. After we get that search out and send out those notices to everybody, because the, this initial letter just goes to the owner. Says, hey, we've got a problem, you need to cure it, fix it, get going. Haven't had any real significant luck on any of that yet. I mean, I've had some communication, positive communication with some owners, I don't wanna mislead, but nothing has happened that I know of to cure any of these. So, now, we need to initiate the title search to send out any mortgage holders, anybody that could possibly raise an issue with this, before we actually start potentially going in, knocking these down. Now, I do think we could secure it, if you're interested in doing that, without significant notices or further hearings, because I think you have potentially an emergency type of situation that you need to take some action. So, I can check into that and...
And we can go in and mow the yard and put, I mean...
Right. With mowing, if it's over a certain height, then I believe, I wanna say it's six inches, but I have to look at ordinances. Yes, typically, you can go in and then you can attach a lien on the property for the mowing services.
So, we are at the state now where he's passed his time, and we're ready for that next step. So, next month, when I come back, you'll have filed all of the paperwork for the next step.
Well, I will at least have, because that was gonna be part of, and will be part of my present, or my questions tonight, is to make sure you guys wanna go ahead and initiate title searches on all four of those properties that we were working on. It'll be around between $600 and $800 total. So, a title company will go to the courthouse and look at the records and determine based on parcel number, names, all that, who has an interest in these properties. That way, we can get an official notice out of a hearing where we would come in, the building commissioner and/or Chris would have pictures, documentation, proof of notices, proof of certified mailings, all those kinds of things, and essentially present to you guys. Again, this is something I don't think you've ever been through, so we'll have to work on that. But, and then hopefully, you'll be able to issue findings to say, yes, there's a clear violation, yes, we notified everybody, yes, we can attach a lien to the property. Because one of the defense, I don't know if it's a defense, but one of the issues that was raised is, one of these properties, someone wants to sell it. And they're alleging that because of this, it could interrupt the sale. Well, right now, we have no lien or no formal notice on record at the county. We just have a notice to the owner. But we really do wanna get a lien on record, because if this thing sells, you don't wanna start the clock over and have a new owner go, well, I didn't know anything about this. I, you know... I mean, you want it fixed, I mean, that's the bottom line, but that new owner could say, well, I didn't know anything about it, I went in title search, so you've gotta notify me and start over again, and restart all this stuff. You don't wanna have to do that, so...
So, this is a developing situation, as you can tell, but what is important for us is for people to come and bring those points to our attention. You know, we can't, you know, we drive around in that, but it's important for other people to help bring those attention to those things, so...
Okay.
Looks like we're in the process, and we'll be calling work sessions and special meetings over the next month to get that process...
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can we get it forwarded up though, before that door being underway? I know Terry, has it been declared an unsafe structure yet? Because Terry called me quite a while ago and came about, and I told him I agree that it's an unsafe structure by the way it's set right now.
Okay, and this one on the north side of town?
Yes.
Well, that's unsafe, that one on the south side of town is 10 times unsafe.
I don't know.
I mean, that place is horrible, each time you go by, it's worse.
Do you know if it's been declared?
I mean, I don't know, we're Terry without all that. I do, I do still believe that you could, I don't, is the front door being kicked in on it? I don't know. Is there a front door on it right now?
I think there is right now.
There is right now?
Yeah.
So, for a while, I don't think it was, it was open or something?
It was open, so probably...
There's that...
That door is wide open.
The back door is...
I can walk right through the garage, walk in that, and it is just...
That's another concern, is that if kids figure out that it's empty...
Yeah.
And easily accessible.
I think we could surely nail plywood over the entrances, what do you think?
My quick answer is yes, we'll look at it tomorrow, make sure, yes. I think under state law and the way your ordinance is, you have the authority to at least secure it, at a minimal, without, you know, really disrupting any value or anything. But it's a clear hazard to the neighborhoods.
I think there's at least one or two basement windows out on it too, is that right?
There it is.
Yeah.
Yes. They live right next to it.
There's our porch, and we see all the animals.
Long windows and busted open, top windows are open on both sides.
Do you look at just to the north there?
Yeah, okay, okay.
We'll try to get it plywooded up, but basically, nothing else, yeah. If we're allowed to.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you are, but let me, wanna give you the right answer, not necessarily.
Then all the work that we do on that plywood and that stuff, that gets, would get reimbursed for that, I'm assuming? Somehow, it's gonna process?
That could be baked into your lien, because you're gonna have all these costs and your certified mailing, all those things can be put into that lien. Obviously, this is not a moneymaker for the town, but yeah, you can recover some cost, and then eventually, if you get title or they surrender the property to you, you can recover that when you sell it, or they transfer it, you're gonna get paid.
Title search too?
Correct, right, all those things.
Yep.
Next up, we have Heart of Hagerstown, Gary.
I have a lot. Fall dumpster day went well. We filled the dumpster on the south side of town. I think it was close to six tons of debris, and then we filled other town dumpsters between the wastewater plant and the town utility garage, so that went over well. I think it accomplished what everybody was wanting it to do. Fall festival is coming up this weekend. It will be from 10 to 3 on Main Street. And hometown Christmas is December, help me, Michelle?
7.
7th on that day, and Michelle's heading up both of those events for us, so that is about what I got for Heart of Hagerstown.
Thank you, sir. And that takes us to Michelle McGinn.
Okay, hometown Christmas is coming along. Again, I wanna thank you guys for allowing us to do the night parade. Everybody seems very excited about that. We did talk to the Parks Department, and they have put in a flagpole across the street that we're gonna be doing a lighting tree from, and then we're gonna be lighting up all the other bushes and trees as well, the gazebo. We're gonna have Santa in a building up here on the little driveway part of the park. Things are coming together. The one big thing that I did come across, some people today that would possibly be open to carriage rides. I know Brian would be excited about that. These people have two carriages they could bring to us to be here for five hours, and they would do the parade as well. So, we're looking into that, and I'm gonna be talking with Heart of Hagerstown about the funds for that and additional, because it is $2,500 for that, to have two carriages and do a parade.
Insurance.
Huh.
Their own insurance.
Yes, and then you have their own insurance, so that's great. So, we're moving along with that. The other thing I wanted to present too is that I think Hagerstown needs to be in this festival guide. All of the other towns in Wayne County are in here. The man, I asked the guy who did the eclipse parade, who had like a bubble truck or something he did through the parade, we contacted him about doing the Christmas parade. He called me today to tell me unfortunately, he can't because we're not a member. The only reason they did it for the eclipse was because Wayne County tourism had us covered for everybody. He did wanna tell me that out of Wayne County, Hagerstown was his favorite, and they do, at the end of the year, recognize 150 different towns that are their top. And he said his recommendation is Hagerstown will be in one of those. So, again, I've been talking to Gary right before the meeting, we'll discuss this again on Wednesday night at Heart of Hagerstown, but I just kinda wanted to bring it forward and let you guys know what's going on, and we'll come back next month, or you know, there may be some things we might need assistance with.
Any questions? Okay, it's time to open the floor for any more public comment.
I have a thing about my water and sewage bill. I have a two-year printout of it. The, over the past, well, since 2021, my water and sewage has both been increasing, and it's been leaking into water meter the whole time. And we just found that out last month, and it was leaking again. It went from $99 last month to $125 each, water and sewage this month. And I don't think I should be held responsible for both of those.
Julie, is this the one before us, or is this separate from all?
Crystal.
Yeah, this is a, this is a really rare situation. We've never had this occur before where the meter itself was defective and the back was not properly seating onto the brass part here. And so, we had Crystal and Grudge and go back through the utility bills to 2021, and we did figure out a utility credit for him, which was pretty substantial. The numbers that he was getting for water and sewer were not unheard of. They were definitely high for him, but there are people, either there are residents in Hagerstown that use this volume of water, so it went unnoticed. But we would recommend a sewage credit of $574.54, and a water credit of $1,176.81, and that is going back to 12,12021. Grudge and Crystal worked through that and tried to get that as accurate and in line with what he should have been using.
So, what was that meter put in?
The meter was put in in 2021.
And he just put a new one in last month, and then I had my son over last night, or night before last, I'm sorry, and found out it was still leaking again, and he came back today and tightened it back up. It's a temporary fix, it'll continue leaking until he gets a new water.
It was not the same problem, it was a seating problem now with the line attaching back into the meter.
Sir, what was your name and your address, please?
James Beadham. This is 100 West College Street.
And then you'd also decide if that was gonna be a credit or a refund, or how we handle that?
Sir, what are you looking for? You look for a credit or a refund? A refund would probably be mine, start now.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we give a refund to the address of 100 West College Street on the recommendation of Chris and the water department, sewer department, $511.54 for the sewer.
$574.
Thank you. Oh, I had to add, $574.54 for the sewer, and for the water, $1,176.81.
It's been properly moved and seconded, provide a refund to the account of 100 West College, and the amounts as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any other public comment?
I'm Jesse Coffin. My wife's been here a couple times, I'm in conference, she couldn't be here tonight. She is volunteering at church tonight. But I'm Iowa Home 301, South Perry. We tried reaching out several times this last month to Terry, we've never gotten a response back. I was also under the impression that we're supposed to meet with the council and the EDC to get further information, we've just not heard anything back. So, we just wanted to get some more information and continue on.
Who said you needed to meet with the council and the EDC? Was that Terry?
That was in our, that was during the council meeting last.
It was that the council, one of us, the council, would meet with the EDC, and we did.
And it sounded like, as I watched the YouTube video, that he was gonna involve the owners as well?
That I did not remember.
Okay. That was both, as I watched the video back and as my wife reported back, that was, would be what we both came to the conclusion of. So, I'm sorry for that misconception.
But we clarified some of the things that she was concerned about, or, and John's already talked about some of those...
Yes.
That we have to back it up and get in place. So, it's kinda weird, you think you would have to do this behind the grant when all the grant comes in, but this grant's a little different. And you can do these things in front of the grant, and then you actually get reimbursed later. So, we actually had John on the, on the call as well. We called John to make sure that we understood exactly what the EDC was saying and what we had to do to get in front of this, and a lot of that was explained by John, and that's the process that we're going through, and your house would be in that process.
Yes.
So, I would think, like John said, within the next 30 to 45 days, we would be a lot farther along on this, on this process.
Okay.
But we don't actually have to own the house to demo the house, and I know that was one question or one concern. We clarified that for sure.
Okay.
And we'll actually, there's a high probability that the demo will be done before the actual grant money comes in, so the town's kinda forwarding all this, the funds, waiting for the federal government to come through with it or to be dispersed. So, I apologize if we didn't invite you, but we did meet. We made it a priority to meet with them, but it was a busy day, and we did have a good meeting, and Chris was there, and Terry was there. I represented town council, and we actually got a little, wanted to make sure he was on the right page, so we called John and conference-ed him in as well, so he could be a part of the conversation. So, we feel, I feel fairly confident we've got the handle on how this grant works and all the steps we have to get done to satisfy and be in compliance, and I think compliance is a good word, to this grant.
Okay.
And so, we will try to keep everybody informed the best that we can what the process is.
Yeah, if there's more, you can let me know, and I've been trying to work with it. I got rid of my vehicles, I've been trying to get some stuff cleaned up around there. I am fond, I've been doing night classes, I'm on fall break next week, I'll be able to do more in the evenings. I wanna work on trying to get some of those walls boarded up. Makes more sense to wipe it and get a hold of Terry if you just put his two weeks in.
Yeah.
So, I really want to work with the town and the council, and whatever I can do.
And I will say on public record that you are the only homeowner that has come to council and has kept us informed of what you're trying to do on your behalf, and we thank you for that. We know it's a daunting project you have there, and we understand that, and we will try to keep you informed on, in our process.
Hey.
Thank you.
The other thing that they brought up, I looked at the property that's right behind his, it's got all the junk cars sitting around it. Are those being tagged? Are we doing anything with those?
That's a hobby.
There's unlicensed vehicles sitting there on, on the property, I mean?
I think it's breaking an ordinance, but it's told me it's a hobby, so I don't know, I think...
Is there an exclusion in the ordinances for hobbies?
Lot of cars around there.
Yeah.
Yep.
They need to be tagged.
Any further public comment?
Yeah, I, I spoke to Chris a couple weeks ago about adding loan information. I didn't know if this was the proper time to discuss.
I didn't know if this was the proper time to discuss the edit loan or not.
I think you had some questions as far as what it could be used for. And we were trying to answer that.
The situation has kind of changed. I'm, I am property owner, and everybody knows what I'm talking about. But, and Aaron, my son Aaron, has a partner for Hagerstown Brewing. So these two are actually going to be the, that's Chris Caspall. They're going to be the business owners. And I'm trying to make the building so that we can work this winter because the, the back roof is just metal. And we've got a guy coming to spray foam. And the front windows, of course, you saw the one window's busted out. And I've got plans, if I can get the money, to have those front windows replaced. They were wanting to know about worrying, or borrowing enough to accomplish what they need. And I, you know, I didn't know how that was going to work, you know? If, if it would need to be two separate loans or one, one.
Well, your circumstances have changed a lot since the last time you applied. So you probably should apply again.
Okay.
Okay?
And it would be separately?
Yes.
And, and that would be at a BZA meeting?
No, not us.
Okay. And you have, like, just paperwork for me to fill out then?
You need the same paperwork you did the last one.
So you as the building owner will be applying this time rather than Aaron as the business owner?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
And then just come in to the city building and then I can discuss it with you?
Yeah, duly agree. And then what we'll do is we'll make sure the form looks like it's filled out correctly and then scan and email it out and then probably discuss it at a work session or at the next meeting.
Okay. And another question I had was, say, I borrowed this amount, and then I found out I needed more. Can it be added to or is it just a one-time application or?
The precedent has been a one-time application.
Okay. In the past, there's been, we just amended it.
Oh, we amended it, okay. So it's one application, but it could be amended.
Okay. I'm just trying to get the building weathered tight so we can do work inside. And I don't want to borrow, you know, too large of an amount and then not use it until, say, next spring or whatever, but, okay.
Do we currently have two out of loans out right now? Is that right? Or is it more than that?
Two currently?
Two, yeah, two current, yeah, just, just the two current, yeah.
Yeah, so we get the paperwork from you?
We do have a business plan in the business.
Yeah, that's our, we have some brewing business plan.
Yeah, let's get, get that from you tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll look at this, but we'll probably still need you to fill out the overall application to attach to that, even though you got your business plan. It's just a one or two-page application, right?
There's more, like five or six?
Yeah, like three or four. Front and back, two pages, front and back, that's more.
Any other comments? No?
I got one. Okay, from the last storm, there's a pole still down on, in our alley. And I can't even get to my garage, get my car back to my garage because it's got combs blocking it off. I was just wondering, when are we going to get that fixed or? Because I do have one teenage kid and one little kid, and they can't even go out there and shoot basketball where the basketball goal is.
Are you aware of it?
I am, is that one of ours or is it? No, is it Frontier or Comcast?
It's Communications Bowl. We're aware of it. I mean, we're Friday of that pole. And it's working with Frontier, so one to 24 weeks.
What does it help if we call Frontier?
You're more than welcome to give them all you got, but it probably won't.
But what?
But it probably won't make a difference. I mean, in my experience, it doesn't change anything.
Even if we're, even if we're annoying?
Yeah, they don't. They use subcontractors, they use subcontractors to sell their poles. Not that that means anything, but they, and they're, they're normally bad anyways. And now with the storm, I mean, he told me that they had, it wasn't going to be. But I would call and say, your trash can't be picked up and stuff like that because I know it's blocking the alley and stuff. So I, I would call them and let them know that I told. But my contact is just a worker. You know, I mean, he forwards it to them, but I would call them.
So John, if we send out a letter to Frontier that they have an alley hazard, give them so long to.
Your case is upheld.
To replace it? And if they don't replace it, we will replace it and charge them $4,000? Would that be fair, Joe, for the pole and time?
I think it would be fair on that, but I think you're assuming responsibility you don't want to assume by doing that. When you, when you knock out everything up through there, let's just, I mean, I'll do whatever you guys want, but I don't know that you want to take that responsibility.
Can we find it? $4,000 a month? I don't care how the money comes in.
Right. So I'll have to dig on that one. I don't know, I'm sure that's probably not covered in any of your ordinances. I mean, it's their pole. And I'm assuming customers must have service or else they would have.
Nobody uses Frontier.
That's the trouble, nobody. So it's, it's, I mean, we've got, Joe knows, we got an issue and we're screaming. So they tell us one thing, you know, you get this runaround and it's, it's a joke, you know, is what it is, so.
Can emergency vehicles get through there?
Oh, no.
So you can get more through there. I think you could probably move it, but.
I mean, you know, just cut it up and say, how to get through?
Yeah. So I would feel, I mean, I would feel comfortable troubling if emergency vehicles can't get through. Just send them a letter at least and send it certified, try to make it as official as we can. Just don't know exactly what teeth we have to really go after them. Communications industry is very well noted, I mean, federally protected, that kind of stuff. Like if, if a line goes down across a highway, you have to, there's certain things you have to do to make contact and things like that. So I don't know what teeth we have, but I'd be happy to send a letter that says, you know, here's the location, emergency vehicles cannot get through. Report to this town council meeting. Just try to make it as imposing as we can.
Are there other towns that find the communications back? You know, that create a fine if you're not able to do this. If I'm weak, it's going to be $50 a day or?
I'm not aware of any. I'm not saying that can't be done or somebody's not doing it. I'm not aware of it off the top of my head.
I guess they need to be aware that if, if a house catches fire and because of their pole, we cannot get to our emergency vehicles there, then they ultimately probably should be responsible for the house.
Right. And we can raise that as, hey, you know, you're on notice that this is an issue and if there's an emergency that, you know.
Then it's on you.
Yeah, yeah. Because then, then we, we have a paper trail that whoever is damaged by that, they can say, well, we didn't know. Yeah, you did know, you just didn't get to your mail quick enough and you didn't, you ignored us. And six months later, there's a fire or something, so.
Break, address?
452 North Plum Street.
Thank you.
This is the alley behind that address?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, the 450 North Plum.
450 North Plum address.
You know, that house.
So there might be, there was a strange fire at 450 North Plum. If fire truck couldn't get there, sorry.
I mean, you know.
Anything further, public comment? And we will move on to ordinance number eight, 2024, the budget for 2025. We introduced this in the last meeting.
I make a motion to approve the budget now presented. Second?
So we're properly moving second to approve ordinance number eight, 2024, the budget for 2025. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next step, we have resolution, number nine, 2024, resolution to appropriate the American Rescue Plan Act funds. And so it's for the water grant, correct?
So that's the balance that we have of the ARCA money that we have to save, what we're doing with it by the end of the year. So that just.
Fire applies it?
Yes.
I make a motion that we accept a resolution, nine, 2024, a resolution to appropriate American Rescue Plan Act funds. Second?
So we're probably moving second to approve resolution number nine, 2024. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? John?
So we've already talked a little bit about the antique building hearing authority. I guess, I think I know the answer to this question, but you guys want me to go ahead and order the four title searches and keep that process moving forward in all those properties?
I believe so.
All right, so I'll do that tomorrow. And then as soon as we get those, then that'll help me, you know, give you guys a timeline of what, to get our notices out and then schedule an actual hearing. And then like with Mr. Coffin who's just here, I mean, he's probably going to come in and agree that the building needs to be torn down. And then we'll get those findings, get the lien, and then the others. We'll just see what happens with those. Becky had emailed me, she'd like to see the employee handbook updated and refreshed a little bit before she goes off council. So I think my goal will be to have a draft at least at the November meeting. And then you all can talk about it and hopefully be able to adopt that in the December meeting. Trying to think of anything else. And then I'll work on a letter here that we just talked about. We confirmed the board up at 450 North Plum. And the letter to Frontier about 452 North Plum, the poll that's out. I think that's all I have.
We have in front of us the, Brad's down here for EDC, isn't he? Okay, so I read through this, EDC, because Valerie's been letting me talk to her and comment on what the town wants to do. I seen, I brought it to John because the wording was a little tricky for me to understand. But I've got a little bit of a concern on page four, like two lines down or three lines down. But then when you get to the bottom of that, it's, it's, it's worded for me to understand. So if you read through that, I know there has been some discussion whether we wanted to continue with the EDC partnership. It kind of looks like to me we needed to get a letter to them on June 30th of 2024, which we did not. And the wording is really funny down there.
I agree, because it says.
Yeah, so.
Listen with the reverb shot.
So I asked, but as I read through it, but I wanted John to read through it. I don't see, if we don't do something, it'll automatically renew, and that's for three years. But I don't see any reason in here why it says we have to renew for three years. John's going to look it over. So since we didn't do the June 30th letter, I'm kind of thinking maybe we're committed to one year because we didn't do that, unless John can read through it and tell us otherwise.
Well, I generally agree with your analysis, I guess. It looks to me like it's missing some language or that says failure to give such notice shall not affect an automatic renewal of this agreement. It seems like it ought to say, failure to give such notice shall not, you know, prevent an automatic renewal or something a little different. So, and the sentence above says it's intended only for purposes of allowing the circumstances to be considered for development of the 2025 budgets. So, I mean, to your point, if you're comfortable with a one-year renewal, I, I don't see any reason that this language would prevent that option. So maybe we send a letter ASAP that says we intend to terminate at the end of 2025. If that's what you all want to do and then say you're open, maybe you say or maybe you don't say you're open to further discussion. Or we could send a letter and say we want to terminate at the end of 2024 and cite that it says it's only intended for purposes of allowing timely the development of their budget, and then let them come back and tell us we can't do it. That's, that would be up to you guys, how aggressive you want to be, but.
I'm not opposed to, you know, saying this, end this thing on December 30th of 2024. Just for the fact we've not really got much out of this partnership. And that was a clear message to them that, you know, we're, we're meaning what we're saying.
The federal BLYT grant is coming from that office, and it won't be done by the end of the year.
Okay, let's do it 2025.
Well, you agree, Chris, I mean, that's not going to be done.
It would probably be smoother if we, yeah. Say that one more year.
You might all of a sudden get approved for one.
Rick, you have time?
Yeah, I remember when we started with EDC, Jim Heiser was the first EDC rep, great guy. He attended about every one of our council meetings. And then the other guy from Arizona, who was this, you know?
Yep.
How, what thing looked that guy?
Yep.
But, you know, we've worked good with EDC, but where have they been the last few years? I've not seen them, you know, when they went and asked for a renewal on their contract, one of their representatives was here explaining stuff. And I haven't seen a one in this council chambers for a couple of years now. I mean, if they do work, it's a good thing, but I just think they, they need to start showing up. I mean, they go to other council members. I've been watching them on TV, go ask them for their renewals. And they've been going to the other towns and asking, but they need to be in this town also. Valerie, you've been here for a while. That's just my opinion.
Very good, very good information there. Well, I mean, I guess we got to, I don't want to pull up any of the possible edifying for the, the BLYT program.
I always, I always voted in favor, even with the EDC. But there's just, the last few years, there's some concerns that, and the taxpayer now, not a council member, you know, warrant it here.
I agree. It's been, it's been a minute since the president has been here to get there.
I mean, they attended about every Richmond meeting, every council, county council meeting, average commissary meeting, but.
That's all Richmond.
But in all fairness to Valerie, she has tried to reach out, or she has reached out to me and Alan in the last month wanting to come in and present to us. And, and I get back to her, I say, we're still in conversation how we want to proceed in this. So I think they have offered to come. Of course, it's just when the contracts have been ready.
Exactly, yeah.
But I, I don't want to say that they haven't reached out because that wouldn't be fair because they have. So when I read that, that one, the one paragraph, I guess personally I don't have a problem renewing it one more year. I probably have a problem doing three years.
Right. I don't disagree. Is that something we need to know? But they, but, but the wording of this is.
We don't, we don't know whether we can even do that.
Right.
Well, there's nothing in this that says it has to be for three years.
Okay.
This one was three years. The way I read it and John was reading it too, if we don't do anything, it's going to automatically renew for three years.
Oh, okay.
So we need to do something.
Yeah.
Or it's going to automatically, John, would you agree? If we do nothing, it's probably going to automatically renew for three years if we don't do it?
Yes, if we don't tell them something, yes, I agree with that.
So like I said, I don't, we're in the middle of this BLYT program that they're the ones that's, the federal funds is coming through the EDC. And we're in the middle of that process. I don't really have a problem renewing it for a year and then to reevaluate where we are at after a year. But I do struggle a little bit with the three years. That's just my opinion.
Unless we just send them a letter notifying we just wanna try and do another year, see where that goes.
So do we have to?
Another agreement would come in, then we'd have to vote on that.
So John, do we need to make a motion? Probably need to make a motion.
I think I'd feel better if you guys made a motion authorizing me to send a letter for a one-year renewal. So.
Second?
So I'm proud to move in second. We submit a letter to kind of EDC for renewal of one year, opposed to three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Anything else for EDC? Bart, some creation?
Yes, they had a meeting last month. They are now in full membership. Jason Palmer has come on board and he is now a part of that board. They've removed the old backstop with the baseball diamond. They've replaced it with another, actually a concrete structure there, and they'll put padding. It's just gonna make it a nicer place back in that area there. They're also looking at the seating. If you've been there, up on the hill, underneath the tree, the rock seating there, that is starting to get pretty freight up, if you will, so they're gonna be replacing that. They're looking at a few different options there. Outside of that, I believe Mike said he thinks he's got most of the dead trees now. You know, it's just one of those things, kinda wait and see what happens, but of course, this is before the last hurricane that came through. So I did go out there today, didn't see really a lot of damage out there, just some limbs down here and there, so. But yeah, outside of that, new backstop, seating in the back wall, and that's really the crux of the meeting last month.
All right, Mark. You guys got a copy of my report? First of all, I wanna thank their utility guys out when that happened. We were out with them. These guys worked their butts off to get the power back on. I know it wasn't fast enough for some people, but you don't know what they were facing if you weren't there watching them, so. So I think they did a hell of a job.
Amen.
And it was a busy month for us, one of the busiest ones since I've been on the department, when we had 35 calls for the month. I can't remember ever having that many, that many calls, so. Our AFT grant that we applied for, we received a word that we were turned down. This is a very competitive grant for the fire department, full-time men, volunteers. We had over 8,000 applications for this grant. The grant's only, and they only awarded 1,600 awards. And the grant is a $324 million grant, where they had applications for almost $8 billion. So you can see how emergency services across the country are hurting, so. So we'll keep trying for grants. We're not gonna stop. I think that's, you know, we're gonna have to have them. So the 2024 grant, AFT grant's not open yet. As soon as it does, we'll start working on that again, so. Our apparatus, 61's out of service, but it was, been fixed. I stopped today and checked on it, and they found the problem, and we've just gotta get it back in the station and get it back in, back in service. So 64 is the problem. I've got my report on that. You know, it's a vital piece of equipment for us, the grass truck is, so. I've not talked to Chris yet, township trustee. I do have a, I've met with a dealer, Donley Safety, who's a, they, we bought a couple trucks off of in the past, and their recommendation and some pricing from them. So I can share that with you guys. But we'll only get with Chris first to see what he thinks, and maybe we can do a work session or something to discuss it and see what we, what we can do and what we can't do, so. Currently in membership, we're down to four people. We had one resign, he moved out of the area, so we're down four. October 31st, trick or treat night, we do our annual glow necklace giveaway to all the kids that wanna come up and, and give stuff away to them, and you know, all that stuff that we give away is purchased with donation money, it's not tax dollars that we give out, but it's money that our guys raise in donations, so. And we're having our second annual chili dinner. It's gonna be on November 9th over at the fire station. So they did it last year, I was not able to attend. It was a pretty good, successful deal. Most of the stuff that we do with that and what we get has been donated. We've had a lot of donations already to help us with that. We've got some sponsors coming in this year that's gonna help out with that, so hopefully it'll be another win for us. Other than that, it's all I got.
I'd like to report, Mike, we finally received our new operating script. It was on hold because we were waiting for the phone to be exited from Frontier. It was two and a half weeks to turn off. But we finally got it, so it's up and we're good to go for another year. The local EAA chapter had their flying, about two weeks ago, flying, they camped out, had over 100 airplanes come in and out during the weekend, so really good show. And again, with the EAA, they've, the FAA finally approved us to put up a building for them to store their items for their flying basically every month. So I need to get with you about a lease for that, so they can actually use the ground. Real similar to 4H1.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Thanks, sir. Advisor, playing to mission.
I'm gonna let Becky, I kinda missed that. No excuse if I missed it, but I do wanna make a comment, because I talked to Terry, but you'll see the commissioner's report in September, and then this permit that's in the back of it. And this is, you know, this is one thing that is a little bit frustrating to whoever the building commissioner will be. Couple of things that I see that's, I mean, this was done before Terry, but there's just so much uniqueness about this whole thing. It's a completely new structure, and it's valued at $1,000. So then that keeps them, that allows them to get a really low permit, okay? But the problem with this is, you know, Terry brought up at the last meeting, some of his concerns is some of the contractors that work around here are not bonded or licensed, and they don't feel that they need to be to do work. So here's a perfect example where you have a facility that was wired by a person that wasn't licensed or bonded. It was in the county, so the county inspects it, but I don't know how they inspected it, but as you can basically see, the grounds and the hot wires were not put on properly, so you could walk throughout the facility and you'd get shocked, whether you're out at the pond or the ductwork, the water heater, I mean, just many things, if you touch it, you're gonna get shocked because it wasn't wired. Of course, you can't go back on the contractor because he's not licensed, he's not bonded, so there you go. So, you know, one of his concerns was all these places in the two-mile fringe, you know, he doesn't really have any authority to do anything, but yet we got a problem, and, and, you know. So this is just one example why Terry was so adamant that we have to maybe look a little different, a little deeper into our building codes and try and determine, are we gonna require, right now it's not, but are we gonna require people to be bonded and licensed before they can get a permit and do stuff? And as you know, that can be real popular because we have several builders in the area that aren't. But this was a concern, and now you've got an example where you've got a real issue, and who's liable for that?
Don't forget that you guys have town employees that are putting meters into these places, that if they're not wired correctly on the inside, it's the fellow that has the meter in their hand that's gonna take the backlash on that. So without being properly inspected, again, that was in the county, I know where he's talking about, but if, if nobody's gonna properly inspect in the county, any town, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter where it's at. It poses a threat to not only homeowner, but also the people doing the work on the outside. Because I can tell you right now, if we don't have a building inspector and stuff's not gonna get inspected, I'm not putting meters in anywhere in Hagerstown. I will not do that without inspection. So that is a safety concern, and myself, no other guy should be willing to accept that.
That's all I got to say about the, the only reason I made that is because Terry does answer to and comes and talks at the planning commission, so that was his report to bring. And I'll have to let Becky and Chris talk about whatever else was done.
I think that was, we did discuss that. We discussed more about the abandoned houses. The abandoned house list did actually, originally have like seven houses on it. A couple of those houses are being fixed up right now as we speak, which is good. We primarily, that's our main discussion.
Chris, your manager reports.
Town manager report, wait for our treatment plan. Ignore those first two sentences, that was from the September meeting. We have clearly televising some sewage and storm sewage lines right now. They're kinda working with us on storm drainage situation down next to Auto Car by the railroad tracks there. We've been having some issues with Dana left station, some flow issues, some pump issues, some telemetry issues where it's color involved, warmer in the middle of the night. You know, so we've had to get a bunch of, see, who is the town manager 10 years ago, having to get a bunch of that kinda stuff straightened out. I think we've got it straightened out now. Water department, working with Triad on the waterline improvement grant. We also have them working on the left service line agreement thing that's due at the end of this month. We do have the $15,000 grant, which we're using, who works at for that, which is good. Electric departments, we're aware we had outage on October 4th, had about 200 of our 1,100 customers out, and like Rick said, our crews did great in really bad weather, bad working conditions. Joe and I are still working on getting some costs together for underground electrical service, and I think, I think the way we're gonna do it, it's rather complex, it's not one person doing all of it, but I think if we, two or three of us do it a little bit each, we'll be able to save some costs that way. Street department, leaf pickup will start Monday, October 14th, and will continue through early December. Got a meeting Wednesday with Doug Kramer, Bob Warner, on engineering out railroad tracks by Auto Car, South Washington Street. We had a tractor have some hydraulic issues over on Maple Street by the cemetery, and actually ran over a couple, it was a combine or they ran over a couple graves, and also leaked a bunch of oil out into Chris Mull's parking lot down here. Something the fire department worked on, getting, trying to get that cleaned up for us. That's pretty much it, if you guys have any questions.
What about the graves that they ran over? How, are they dammed? I mean, they're, did they not go over the stones?
They went over one stone, one fly stone thankfully, yeah, but that stone's gonna have to be redoubled. And then there was one grave, they've not hit a stone on that.
So what caused the leak?
What caused the leak? I do not know. It was a brand new combine, wasn't it, Rick? It was a brand new combine, wasn't it?
Two years old.
Two years old.
So what, what getting the graves that caused the leak?
No, no, I think what happened, there was a car parked in front of, on Maple Street, on the south end there, there's one house that faces Maple Street, they had a car or two parked in front of that, and the tractor tried to dodge around those cars where they were.
This is a huge piece of equipment, it barely got to the thing.
So isn't he responsible for the, for the running over the?
Yeah, he is. Yeah, we have Metal Creek lawns working on returning all that.
And then he'll take care of all that.
Damage to the asphalt from the whole?
The fire department fortunately got on and cleaned it up pretty quickly on Chris Mull's parking lot, though it looked like there was probably some damage today.
It is.
That is part of having new pavement.
On a spill like that, it's state statute where the spiller is responsible for that cleanup or reimbursement of the companies that did cleanup, so.
You say that is a part of the code for the state?
That's state statute, yeah. That's him through D and A. Matthew from.
So you can bill that person?
Yes. I mean, I give them kinda credit because they came in down on Maple Street, and they really, those guys did a good job trying to clean up the best they could, and especially down here on Main Street. Happened again where they were leaving and head out, the same parts that was fixed blew again, and they lost all their hydraulic foot again, and they were, they had several people down there, and Gary Robinson absorbent, and they, they didn't mess around. I mean, they do, but it was a.
The police officer got injured, is that correct?
Pardon?
The police officer got injured during that?
I'm not gonna speak for Keith and his crew, so.
It was, is Chris Mull fine with the parking lot and how it looks for the cleanup?
Oh, it's not being cleaned up yet.
Oh, it's not?
No, it's still looks awful, he can drive by there.
Okay, I'll just have that by there.
Yeah.
Anything else for Chris? Julie?
The girls in the office thought we should nominate the utility, utility workers and Joe, Joe and Nate Burns. They stayed behind to help us, and we're a citizen of the month.
Make a motion.
Second?
So I'm proud to move in second that we nominate the utility crews from Hagerstown as well as the Burns Corporation for their assistance in cleanup and restoration of power from the storm as citizen of the month. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed?
One other thing on behalf of Julie is Chris, Julie and I attended Communities and School event that was at Hartley Hills, heard the report. I wished everybody could have heard it. They are happy to serve over 10% of the student population throughout the county. A lot of it is food and clothes and necessities just to get the kids to school. And Hagerstown is not, our percentage is right along with all the other schools, so we're not immune from any of this. And of course, the Lilly grant has run out for them, so just trying to come up with funds and funds. So one of this was, was, was trying to raise funds, and I personally supported it, but I told Julie that I felt that the town, they was asking for commitments that night, that we can commit $250 towards food and clothing for them to use at the community and schools, and I need to bring that up. I make that as a motion.
Second?
How do you normally do this, right?
Well, we normally do a large one.
That's what I was thinking.
This is just.
This was just extra.
A bridge.
They are just.
Postcards on the table.
They're just running.
I thought you gave more than 250 dollars?
Yeah, 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 we'll still, we'll still do that. They're just running out of funds to just help these kids.
And they really do a great job.
Yeah, they had some testimonies there, and you know, just the things that they do and some things that the kids go through, it's, it's kinda heartbreaking.
I think the women that work there with the kids is, that's really good.
Yeah, they've got, and we have a really, and I might get this a little wrong, but our site manager, and I thought it was neat, crocheting is something she does for a hobby, and one of the young people that she was working with, she's seen some of her work, and she says, I'm trying to learn that too. And so they got working together, and then from that, they've created a, with these kids, a crocheting club. And now these kids that are being mentored and need help, they've decided that they're gonna crochet, each of them a sock and cap, and present to a kindergartner at the elementary. So they're trying to do a lot of good work and trying to do things, and you know, they're just really. So they're trying to do a lot of good work and trying to do things and, you know, they're just really limited on their resources, what they have to do.
And they do need mentors, just a half hour.
If you want to mentor, they're just, just to give you an idea that I'll be a little off on this, but there's approximately eighty-five hundred students in Wayne County and they are working with over nine hundred kids, almost a thousand kids, so you can see they're spread out over ten percent of our kids' population and they're just doing the best they can do on the funds that they have, so that's kind of that.
So probably move in second then, that we donate two hundred and fifty dollars to the community and schools, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Anything else? Reminder, the next regular council meeting will be Monday, November fourth, twenty twenty-four, six thirty PM. Also a reminder that Halloween will be October thirty-first, the tree hours will be from six to eight here in town. Anybody have a chance to review the claims?
Move to approve.
So probably move in second to approve claims, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Probably move in second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.